Good evening, everyone. We would like to call the school board meeting, the business session for September 3rd, 2025 into session. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Percival?
Here.
Ms. Ricard?
Here.
Mr. Faruk? Mr. Hedgepath?
Here.
Ms. Rizzi?
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Ms. Burke?
Present.
Mr. Jafari?
Here.
Ms. Fernandez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Give us just a moment, we're having some feedback in the background.
We're just doing a test, quickly. I believe we resolved the issue. Fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, five, zero.
Wonderful. We absolutely love technology, but sometimes it can give us a little bit of a challenge, so thank you for your patience. At this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance and move with silence. Mr. Camaras, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Would you please pick up the microphone and hold it while you speak?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll have our translation services announcement.
Good evening, everyone. If you need an interpretation from English to Spanish, please come see me at the table in the back with the interpreters. We have interpretation headsets for anyone that needs one. Interpretation in Spanish is also available for those watching this meeting through Zoom. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a normal pace and keep your face no more than a couple of inches from the microphones so that our interpreters can hear you clearly. I will now make the same announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor diríjase a la mesa de atrás donde estaré yo con los interpretes. Yo les puedo dar audífonos para que puedan escuchar la reunión de la junta escolar en español. También interpretación está disponible para los que están viendo la reunión a través de Zoom. Thank you, gracias.
Thank you. I would like to reiterate from our Spanish interpreters, they requested for us to please remember to talk slowly so that they have time to process what we're saying and interpret. So we'll try to do our very best to accommodate that request. Moving right along to 1.04, approve the minutes of August 4th and August 5th, 2025 school board meetings. Ms. Ricard?
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the minutes of the August 4th, 2025, and August 5th, 2025, school board meetings.
Harris Mohammed?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Ricard and seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Faruk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And before we adopt the agenda, I believe there's an amendment. Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend the agenda to include item 6.07, receive for action, pit for kids, safe routes to school resolution, and adopt the agenda as amended. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Mr. Hedgepath. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Percival, yes. Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Faruk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Jafari?
Yeah.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd also like to make the public aware that this particular item, that they want to follow along, the document has been placed under new business 7.01, just for your awareness. Moving right along, now we have one of the best parts of our evening. We have our student representatives. Mr. Camaras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled to introduce two of our students this evening. First is Treasure Brown. Treasure is a current sophomore at Richmond High School for the Arts, where she excels both inside and outside the classroom. She's an active member of FCC LA, proudly representing her school at events and conferences. Outside of school, Treasure showcases her entrepreneurial spirit by doing hair in her spare time, proving that age is never a barrier to ambition. With an outstanding 4.5 GPA, Treasure is dedicated to her academic success and already has set her sights on attending an HBCU with Howard University at the top of her list. She plans to stay involved throughout high school using opportunities like FCC LA to strengthen her leadership skills, build her resume, and prepare for her future. Treasure doesn't let being young stop her from chasing opportunities that will help her grow. With her drive, determination, and vision for success, her potential is truly unlimited, and it's clear that she is on a path to go far. Please join me in welcoming Treasure Brown.
Good evening, School Board Superintendent and RPS community. First, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. This past summer, I had the honor of attending the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida, and it was truly an unforgettable experience. I competed in a STAR event, which stands for Students Taking Action with Recognition. My category was promote and propel size FCC LA, where I highlighted the ways our school spreads awareness about FCC LA and the major event we host each year. At the event, students get to interact with trade schools, entrepreneurships, college and representatives, and people from different career clusters and pathways. It gives us a chance to gain better insight into college, careers, and entrepreneurship, while also showcasing the importance of FCC LA. Presenting this project in front of judges really helped me strengthen my public speaking skills and boosted my confidence. This trip also gave me many personal firsts. I took my very first flight, and I even rode my very first roller coaster, which helped me overcome my fear of flight heights. I enjoyed trading pens, networking with people from all over the country, and doing challenges that allowed me to build friendships. Some of my favorite memories included Aquatica Universal Studios and watching the fireworks at night. I also had a special bonnet tie with Ms. Hines and Cortavious, our FCC LA president who couldn't be here tonight because of work. And when I finally got to put on the red jacket, it gave me such a sense of pride. It reminded me that I am part of something bigger than myself. While I am very grateful for that opportunity, I also want to take a moment and share concerns that I believe affect students at our school. First, the bathrooms are not always clear, with basic supplies, which makes it difficult for students throughout the day. Second, the time limit we are given to get to class can be challenging when the hallways are always crowded. It often feels rushed and stressful. Third, many students feel there hasn't been enough transparency about the new building updates. We are excited about what's coming, but we would love to be more informed about the progress and what to expect. Finally, I think students need more district support and help than us again. Exposure to opportunities like FCC LA Nationals and being fully prepared for them. For example, the Red Blazers are a requirement at Nationals, but they are very important. My partner and I had to fundraise to make sure we could both have one. I am proud we made it happen, but I also know that without the support, other students may not get the same chance. Despite these challenges, my experience at FCC LA Nationals showed me how powerful this organization is for students like me. That's why I will continue to be a member and why I am committed to promoting FCC LA, so more of my peers can join, get involved, and gain the same kind of skills, experience, and exposure that I have been blessed to have. Thank you again for allowing me to share both my experiences and my thoughts tonight.
Thank you so much, Treasure. And the red jacket looks fabulous. We are also joined by Taisha Barrett, who is a senior at Richmond High School for the Arts, where she is also an FCC LA member and participated in the inaugural year of the Bulldog Girls Flag Football Team. Taisha recently co-authored an ebook on how to become a travel nurse and hopes to have it published by the end of the year. In her spare time, Taisha serves as a crew member in the fast food industry, where she utilizes her customer service skills and work ethic. Her ability to balance work and school has been incredible. She is always willing to embrace the new opportunities that will help her grow professionally and personally. Upon graduation, Taisha plans to pursue a degree in nursing at an HBCU with a long-term goal of becoming a travel nurse. Please join me in welcoming Taisha Barrett.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank the school board for inviting me to speak and for recognizing me and my peers' hard work. My name is Taisha Barrett, and I'm a senior and a proud FCC LA member. Last year, I had a chance to compete at the Virginia FCC LA State Conference, where I got to practice my public speaking skills and network with other FCC LA chapters in Virginia. Though I was placed third place during state, I am grateful for the chance to compete again. I feel like FCC LA is a great program that helps students to grow by challenging themselves out of their comfort zone. You can join as early as sixth grade, as long as you have taken or enrolled in a family and consumer science. One of my concerns I have with the district is the lack of support for the students to prepare properly for life at the high school. An easy solution will be incorporating a study period for seniors where they have desired time for college or career preparation. And a structured time for seniors to focus on life after graduation. We can ensure that leave high school not only with a diploma, but also with a clear direction for their future. And a special thank you to Ms. Fireson, Ms. Hines, Ms. Brandon, for unwavering support, guidance, and encouragement. Your dedication has helped us grow, pushed past challenge, and become the best version of ourselves. We are truly grateful for everything you have for us. Through FCC LA, I gained the leadership skills, confidence, and opportunity that allow me to truly maximize my potential and prepare for my future success. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much to both Taisha and Treasure. Can we take a picture with you all to celebrate you? All right, let's all come on down.
Before we move forward, I just want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Hines Whitmore. She, during the summer, you know, a lot of times, we know a lot of things, but it's really, we have to tap into the power of our people. And she sent us an email letting us know about the experience. And she also gave us the presentation deck to kind of highlight what went on. And it was just, we were so blown away. And, you know, we reached out to Superintendent Camaras, said we have to have them come and represent and tell us about their experience. So major shout out to you and your team for all that you're doing to invest into our scholars. Thank you. And now we'll move on to 2.02, proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are trying something a little bit different this school year. I'm going to ask for everybody's indulgence. We think we have the tech worked out. It's a little complicated, but if anything doesn't work quite as expected, we appreciate your grace and understanding. And with that, here it goes. We got one more. I do want to just take this moment to thank Chip, Alyssa, the entire communications team. This takes a lot of work to do, but I think it is well worth it.
Testing again. Okay. Are we moving on to 2.03? Okay. And now we're going to move on to 2.03, recognition of attendance awareness month. But I wanted to give a shout out to Cardinal Elementary, all the scholars that did a phenomenal job with that video. That was a pleasant surprise, great job. That was phenomenal. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a win.
It's a win. Yes. We love it.
Picture with our coordinators. Let's, oh, who helped make all this happen. Danielle, do you mind coming up and just saying a word? And then we'll come down and take a quick picture. But let's have Dr. Green Bell just say a quick word.
Thank you, Mr. Camaras and members of the school board. We have with us some members who do a lot in terms of our chronic absenteeism. It is attendance awareness month. And so our coordinators lead our family liaisons across the district in making sure that all of our students get to school on time. Picture time.
Let's do it.
All right, that was really exciting. Thank you all so much for your efforts. It was a pleasant surprise to see that. And now we're going to move right along to 3.01, announcements. Ms. Ricard, Mr. Hedgepath, Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a further comment on attendance awareness month, I wanted to thank Ms. Jackson and the engagement team for their welcome back week at Carver Elementary. They did an incredible job bringing out churches and fraternities and VCU and VUU and the VCU PD and Netsi was there. Catherine Jordan, our second district council person was there as well. And it was just a really great way to welcome our scholars back. And Ms. Jackson had an outfit that matched each group every day, and I was very jealous of that. And I just really want to thank them. It was a great, great way to welcome our scholars. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hedgepath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll concur with Ms. Ricard that the first week and all the activities that happened were excellent and were really fun. And it was a lot of fun to be able to recognize and welcome our community back to the schools. Just two quick announcements. One, that the fourth district council member, Abba Bakar, and I will be co-hosting a meeting of the fourth district at Huguenot High School on September 17th at 6 o'clock to 7:30. Councilmember Abba Bakar normally feeds us pretty well, so I would encourage you to come to that, that meeting, where she and I will dialogue with the residents of the fourth. And then the second is the first of the fourth district parent teacher advisory council meetings will occur on September 25th at Southampton Elementary School from 5:30 to 6:30.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm leaving something. First of all, a night out, which we had in August, I think it was August the 10th. I don't know whether I announced this at the last meeting or not. Richmond Public Schools was well represented there, including Franklin Military Academy. That's the last time we had a meeting. I was a little late getting here. Okay, I remember. Anyway, I was presented with a check for $1,000 from folks in the East End in support of our seventh district schools. Yeah, so I'm very pleased with that. And Mr. Cooper already had the check. I know where it's going to go. Second item is Garland Avenue Baptist Church, as we all know, hosted a Richmond Public Schools Day this past, not this past Sunday, Sunday before last. Garland Avenue Baptist Church is located in the north side and the church of our former and deceased superintendent, Dr. Lucille M. Brown. So educators were in the house. Mrs. Rizzi and I attended, and I was very proud. Armstrong High School football team, they had the big school bus and all, so a shout out to transportation on being there on a Sunday. And we also had Richmond Public Schools speech team, which I didn't know we had a speech team. So they were excellent. Most of them, I think, were from Richmond High School the Arts. And there were a couple from Armstrong as well. Okay, all right. But it was a delightful day. The pastor is the Reverend Dr. Jeffrey The pastor is the Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Smith, who is a retired superintendent of Hampton Public Schools, and he sends his regards to you, Mr. Camaras. And Ms. Diane Bacon was the coordinator, the former organist and music teacher from Mary Moffett Elementary School. Okay. And my next item is this past Friday night. God damn, Mr. Hitchpath, did you want to say it? Bless your heart. Beautiful, beautiful turnout. Thank you to our engagement office for setting up a beautiful spread. And Dr. Danielle Green was there. Alyssa Schweitz was there. I hope I said your name right. And Mr. Solomon Jefferson was there as well. And Don Page, Mrs. Page, our former school board chair, did the honors of gracing Mr. Coach McPhee, Richard McPhee. I never knew his first name until last night, I mean, that night, because everybody always said Coach McPhee. But it was a great turnout. I think it was a sellout. Dr. Massa was awesome at Huguenot High School. But that field has been, stadium has been renamed in Coach, the coach's honor. And it was a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful evening. Thank you so very much. Dr. Stephanie Ramsey did take great pictures and shared that as well. And my last item is September 27th, please put this on your calendar, the East End Festival. This will be our eighth annual East End Festival. It is sponsored, our main sponsors, Bond's, Of course, and anyone else that wants to contribute. It is free. It's for the schools, all of the schools in the East End, to include the sixth and seventh district schools. And what we do is to support the arts. Richmond Symphony is performance performing. Saxmo Gates, it was on the RPS Direct, but I haven't seen it lately. So I hope we can get that back on because we usually, it's all free. We invite parents, invite the community out. And we're starting out with our children. Richmond Public Schools, all city band. I don't want to go down the whole list, but it's an awesome, awesome evening of the arts to include music, to include dance, to include painting and other exhibits. And we have hundreds of vendors that we ask people to support so that we can raise money to continue to support the arts in the East End of the city of Richmond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Rizzi?
Hmm?
Mr. Jafari?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Let me say that.
Thanks, Madam Chair. A couple of announcements. I wanted to give a shout out to the schools in the eighth district for the warm welcome that I received when arriving and the walkthroughs. And I shared with my colleagues about the cohesiveness with such youngsters, preschoolers and head starters. It really resonated just how much RPS is really impacting them and what we're doing really to make things move smoothly. It was a very smooth opening day and opening week for that matter. Okay. Moving along, those in the eighth district over in the 17th Street and Ingram Avenue areas, I just want to assure you that we are working with the superintendent to resolve any of the student walking issues and transportation issues that we're having over there. So I just wanted you to know that. And finally, I too was able to attend the school renaming, the school grounds or field renaming last Friday. And I really, as I looked at it, you know, when I came through Walker, I played for Cannonball Club and Coach McPhee kind of came in as I was exiting. So I really didn't get to meet him in that regard. But you know, I wanted to share something that I think was, a lot of people really don't know about him. A lot of people know that he did send a lot of people on, his athletes, onto colleges. But we look at the progress and the successes that we are really owning now, really getting heard in the media. But I want you to know that RPS has been on the cutting edge really since the mid-'90s. When they first came up with the concept of safety resource officers, Coach McPhee or Chief McPhee or Deputy Chief McPhee, as he was known then, he was a part of the process that really laid the groundwork for what our current security system looks like today. And not only that, I owe him a debt of gratitude because a lot of people don't know that he was one of the individuals who cast the vote for myself and Jasper Kitchell to become the very first safety resource officer ever hired by Richmond Public Schools. And so a lot of people don't, they don't really know that part about Coach McPhee. But when he talks, he not only talks football, but he knows security as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Of course. That was awesome story. Thank you for sharing that.
And please forgive me for not stating your name, but we would try to find him when it was time to take pictures. He was on the field. He was on the field. And how we pictured him is because he had on this big cowboy hat. All right? So if, I don't know whether you're cowboy fans, but, and, but I still...
We're covering cowboy fans.
Okay, all right, okay. But we were looking for him. Remember Hitchpath to take pictures and say, where is he?
Oh, that's... Thank you both for sharing. Uh, Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I, like, enjoyed visiting all the schools that I represent. The first week went by smooth. People actually loved the staggered start. I got a lot of people saying that they enjoyed it. They thought that worked really well. And I am going to try to make it to all of the back to school nights, starting with Lois Harrison Jones tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Also, Mr. Hitchpath and I enjoyed welcoming the kindergarteners at Patrick Henry last week. So, yeah, that was a lot of... So, yeah, just a shout out to everyone. The first week, the first couple of weeks have been awesome.
Thank you. Christopher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to say that the stagger start, from my view as a parent, has been a huge success. As the parent of a new sixth grader in RPS, the stagger start really helped him get familiar with the school, which was very new to him. And he got a chance to get his routine down before all the other kids showed up. And so he felt really good about it. And actually, the other day said, this is rare for people who have, like, you know, middle school age kids. He said he really likes his life. So I'll take that picture. I'll just make a few quick announcements. One is that I will be at the Battery Park Civic Association meeting. That's for the neighborhoods in and around Barton Heights in the third district. Next Tuesday, September 9th at 6:30 PM at the North Avenue Library. The next day, September 10th, we have our AI Task Force meeting at Norrell School at 5:30 PM. And McLennan Elementary, which is the former Ginnor Park, is having its first parent-teacher organization interest meeting September 17th, Thursday, September 17th at 4:00 PM at McLennan Elementary. So that's it for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just have a couple of announcements up there. There's no one else who'd like to share. I had the pleasure of partnering with Councilwoman Nicole Jones on August 26th for a community input meeting. This meeting was surrounding some of the development that is happening within the ninth district. There's an amazing apartment complex that's going to offer three-bedroom, four-bedroom townhomes that are very affordable. They also have committed to having 58 stipends for those who may have some challenges. And so they'll have the same access as those that will be paying full price. What I really loved about the conversation that took place is that they're really trying to target first responders, teachers, EMS workers, and those that are really contributing to the community. And hopefully, we'll be able to give them the first right of refusal. And so they're going to make sure that that information is sent out. And I will certainly send it out to you all because obviously, we want our teachers to, you know, be within sometimes walking distance, driving distance. It's a beautiful layout. But just, it was a really great conversation. And so I wanted to give my partner, again, Nicole Jones, Councilwoman of the ninth district, a major shout out for all the efforts that she's putting forth for the ninth. I also want to recognize, on the 28th, we had our education collective with Mayor Avula, along with city council. And many of our school board colleagues were there to have a very great conversation at Maymount Foundation just surrounding budgetary obligations and really talking about it from a collaborative respect, a perspective. We came away with a lot of amazing ideas that we believe we'll be able to implement to just kind of raise the alarm of the needs for RPS as our children truly deserve the best that we can offer them. I also like to make everyone aware of the meeting of the General Assembly, Richmond delegation and the Richmond School Board that will take place September 5th. The time is from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM. That's going to be in the communities and schools hub room at 100 Everett Street, number 2, Richmond, Virginia 23224. This is a reconvening. We did this same courageous conversation last year, and it's really around the same messaging as what we did with the collective. It's really just talking about how we can be strategic and have a discussion on policy and budgetary outcomes impacting the city of Richmond's schools and planning our collective agenda for the 2026 session. So it is open to the public and all are welcome. Last but certainly not least, I would like to make those aware from the Reed community that there will be... There, wait, I just messed up my notes. Hold on, let me go back. Sorry, guys. A lot on my... Their back to school night is going to be tomorrow night from 4 to 6. And then I also just want to extend a warm welcome. I too was able to go into the ninth district and really connect with the schools. I want to give a warm welcome to, we have two new principals in the ninth district. We have Principal Smith, who is at Reed Elementary School. And we also have Principal Blunt, who is at River City. And I was also accompanied by Delegate Mike Jones to welcome the children for the first and second day of school. And so I want to give a major shout out to him, along with those from Liberation Church, who convened to welcome them in a rally form. So it was a really great start. And there was a lot of great energy. And all of the six schools in the ninth are off to a great start. So thank you. All right. Now, moving right along to public information. At this time, we'll ask Ms. Richardson if she could give us the guidelines, please.
Conduct of speakers. Speakers shall state their full legal name prior to addressing the school board. Speakers will address the school board as a whole rather than individual school board members, the division superintendent, school board attorney, clerk, or any other staff member. The school board will listen to comments but will not respond during the public information period. Persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to: 1. Campaign for public office; 2. Promote private business ventures; or 3. Use profanity or vulgar language. If a community member's comments during the public information session relate to school-based issues, the chair may refer that individual to Richmond Public Schools Administration for one-on-one consultation and follow-up. It is important that all community members who wish to participate in the public information period abide by the guidelines set forth in this policy. Refusal to abide by the policy result in the forfeiture of the remaining time that has been allotted to the speaker. Community members may express their views in writing in lieu of any oral presentation. Comments received in writing in lieu of an oral presentation will not be read during the meeting but shall be posted to the school board platform board docs.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for the pre-registered speakers to come up and sign the clipboard before coming to the microphone. We have Dr. Carl Vaughn. And after that, we have Dennis Harvey. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carl Vaughn. I'm the founder of Jump Start U2, a nonprofit located here in Richmond City. I was here at the July school board meeting discussing the repurposing of Thompson Middle School. So thank you again for your time and thoughtful engagement around Thompson Middle School. I respect the VPC's recommendation to refurbish and share the desire to see this site serve Richmond families. At the same time, I remain committed to working with the VPC and others to explore a broader, community-based solution, one that reflects long-term sustainability and neighborhood impact. As someone who's led schools like Armstrong, Chandler, Elkhart, and have seen firsthand how Armstrong, Kennedy, Chandler, East End/Middle, Amenice Middle School, Norrell, Clark Springs, and Community High have closed, reopened, repurposed, and still underutilized. That cycle drains resources and erodes trust. Instead of repeating that pattern, we propose a new path. Surplus designation paired with adoptive reuse. Thompson can become a hub for adult education, workforce development, and second chance programming, built on partnership and proven demand. We also recognize the urgent overcrowding south of the river. District-wide solutions like boundary adjustments, modular classrooms, and satellite campuses can help that. Thompson can be part of that solution, not just physically but symbolically. Let's build forward together with transparency, creativity, and shared purpose. And I end with this. I have friends and associates that says, man, you're crazy. Why are you going to go up there and ask them to surplus the schools so that you can use it? They're not going to do it. But I can share this much. I've sat here tonight and I've heard stories. I know Coach McPhee. I know Earl Burke. We were principals together here in Richmond. I know Shana Mohammed. She was my algebra teacher. I know Ms. Blunt, that just became principal of River City. She was my administrative assistant at Armstrong. So I see how things can happen. You build, you work together, and you show that things can be done. I have a principle that was placed in me.
30 seconds.
I call it the HU6 Principle. It's H-U-S. It says, tough situations don't last, tough people do. So when going through, keep your shoulders high, H, your chin up, U, and stay vertical like hands on a clock at six. Because we can do all things through Christ who strengthens us. So just as I've taught that to everyone that I've come up and run into, I seek to operate that through our nonprofit, in which we have housed over 500...
Time.
In our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Harvey?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dennis Harvey, and I'm a 1966 graduate of Armstrong High School. And I looked around at the audience when I first came in. I might be the oldest guy in the room, and I'm proud of that. A little bit about my, a little bit more about my background. I'm one of the few people maybe in this room that attended a Rosenwald school. My school, my parents helped build, and that was in Halifax County, North Carolina. I lived on a farm. We worked. Had to do farm chores before school and walk into school two miles. And stayed in North Carolina schools until fifth grade. Moved from a working farm to Churchill, East End. And was the second group of black students to attend Fairmount Elementary School. And from then on, it's been a big change. And I really want to thank Richmond Public Schools for the education that I received at Armstrong and our illustrious principal, Mr. George Peterson. I think Mr. George Peterson had a massive heart attack. a massive heart attack at a Richmond Public School meeting.
Thirty seconds.
And I want to let you know that I support the Kennedy students on having their name placed on the Armstrong building on Cool Lane. Who wouldn't want to be a part of that history? I heard the word schools were birthed. Maggie Walker High School was birthed when Armstrong High School was overcrowded in 1939. 38, I believe. Kennedy was birthed in 68. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. That is your time.
All right.
We appreciate you coming and speaking with us tonight.
It's okay. I need to, I want us to acknowledge Mr. Harvey. He is a renowned historian. He is a well-known author. And he also has written books on the Maggie Walker Armstrong classic, of which he and Dr. Howard Hopkins have continued that mission for years. But this gentleman, who also is a gardener, correct? Yeah, yeah. But he has done so much for so many. We're delighted you're here this evening. I didn't want the opportunity to pass because he's been so supportive of RPS on so many levels. And he's well-known. And you are the oldest man in the room, a person in the room. Thank you. That makes me feel good.
Thank you for sharing that background, Ms. Burke. Thank you. At this time, we do have time for those that are in the audience for public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and share a comment? This is the time. No takers? All right. All right, Mrs. Joss.
I could take you know bada bing bada boom. It's a lot. I know that I'm at the point where y'all are talking about the calendar for next year. I think it'd be great if you all are going to survey people to ask them about this format because I just think it's really difficult for the public to stay informed. Yesterday, and I, you know, still catching up with the meeting from yesterday, but y'all also talked about the dreams for RPS, the metrics. And I think it's really good to have things to measure. But one of the things I guess I was concerned about was on page 15 for compensation. It mentions that the measures for success are going to be looking at the step zero for teacher salary, retention rate of teachers with zero to three years of experience, and percent of staff who respond favorably to satisfaction surveys about salary benefits. Y'all did that Evergreen Solutions study a while back, and one of the things from that study is that it showed that we were behind in terms of like our more experienced teachers. And so I think that.
Thirty seconds.
Having metrics like that are great, but I think, or I hope that there's some opportunity to have some input and maybe changing some of these tricks. Also, a la- last thing, sometimes listening to these things on YouTube is difficult. Maybe it's because people like me who don't know how to use the mic, but maybe like a better mic would be better too. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to share a public comment? Good evening.
Dear members of the board, my name is Kirk Towns. I'm a proud member of the Armstrong. I'm a proud member of the Armstrong. High School passed in 1977. We are the last class in Armstrong with Mr. George Peterson as our principal. He retired in June of our freshman year. I'm opposed to any name change of the Kennedy Building on Cool Lane away from Armstrong High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to share a public comment? All right. We'll transition on to 5.01, receive for action, Head Start Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Cameron's, and the members of the board. In your package, you have the July 2025 Head Start Report with all the components, including the links that will give you the Policy Council minutes and the financial statement for July 2025. But I will also would like to update the board on the waiver for disabilities transportation was approved by the Office of Head Start. Affected immediately, the funded enrollment for Head Start is 614, including 513 for Richmond and 136 for Pittsburgh, and early Head Start remains in stack, in stack 56, 56 slots. The budgets remain unchanged for the year 2025, but we'll transition to the new funded enrollment budget affected August 1st, 2026. We submit the PIR, which is the Programming Enrollment Program Information Report, on August 28, 25. I personally met with all the partners' directors and I gave them an update on their staff credentials and they'll come in federal review and their brand review to be prepared and give them the number slot, the number slots that they have. They will have per site. Systems are in place for their brand and if federal review to be ready for those. We will be working in a budget modification with finance and myself for the next few months. And a last-minute update on enrollment as of today, including a sect and enroll for Head Start, we have 434 out of the 513. And early Head Start, we have 47 out of the 56. So our goal is to be fully enrolled by the end of this month. Any questions?
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. The board received communication probably a week or so ago, but I was catching up on emails a little later, so I apologize. But spoke to over a million dollars that were left, that was left from being unspent. Can you explain to the board, one, how can we support, how can we help support the Policy Council so we will not continue to have any money left on the table? And then, two, how is that communication being filtered to the Policy Council? Are they told earlier that this money is being left on the table? Or what, what does that look like? What, like, this has happened multiple times, and I know they were asking over time, why are we not being told much sooner that there's money left on the table to spend? So where is that disconnect? Because it's like making a rush to spend down over a million dollars in 30 days or 45 days.
So the million points, something that you're referring, that was now left on the table, that is the one point, something that the Office of Head Start has decided, even though that they decreased the funded enrollment, to leave that money into the program. And that's why we have to now do a budget modification to determine how we're going to spend the money in the next, in this coming year. And the money that was left is money that is already obligated. So and we have 90 days after the July 31st of this year to liquidate that money. So the Policy Council is being informed in every Policy Council meeting, where are we with the obligated money, with the liquidated money? And we are projecting there's not going to be money left. Any other questions?
Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to clarify, Dr. Harris Muhammad, there, there were, over the past few years, there was money left on the table. In total, I believe it did amount to over a million dollars, but that was over a few years. So is, Dr. Harris Muhammad's concern is a valid one, what we're doing, has been discussed in the Policy Council and what we can do to help spend that down, especially in the last 90 days. Could you, Mr. Taylor Cruz, comment a little bit more on the enrollment? So you gave us an, an under-enrolled number, but from the last meeting, I recall that we had some in the pipeline. You said you.
Yes.
You, you hoped to be at full enrollment by the end of the month. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that means for the board?
Yes, because at this point, we only need 79 to be fully enrolled in Head Start. And those applications, we're working very closely with BPI, and we are collaborating with BPI. So we're working as a team, and everybody's doing placement. BPI is doing placements in Head Start. So everybody's working together to make sure that we are fully enrolled by the end of the month. Because in the Office of Head Start, enrollment during summer doesn't count. So they will look into our enrollment numbers starting in September. Those are the numbers that we're reporting in October.
Just a follow-up. Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if you were to put a percent confidence level on converting those pre-Enrollments or Enrollments into actual Enrollments?
I'm very confident that we, when at least a 97%, and we out of the woods.
Any other questions? I just have one. Could we get a, I know that we, there was some discussion around trans, the transportation component?
Yes.
And is that already underway? Where are we with that process? Just kind of curious to see how it's working out, if you are.
Yes, bus services started already. So for Robert Taylor, Oak Grove, Perfax, and the 18 on the first service school. So yes, there has been a little bumps on the road because we know transportation for the first-time partners, but transportation is en route. There, there's only one bus that is doing transportation for the both, Oak Grove. So they not going to add an additional route to that bus. But yes, they, they are providing transportation to the partners. And thank you for that.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Cameron's, for, he assured us that he would make it happen, and, and his team has made it happen. And I know that's going to be huge.
Yes.
For, to ensure that those enrollment numbers and those, you know, day-by-day, that those numbers remain high. So really excited to see that. I know this might be an ambitious question, and I hate to put you on the spot if you can't answer it. Understanding now that we do have transportation in place and that we do feel that we will be able to maintain the 97% that is required, do you think that there's any possibility that there could be reconsideration for this time next year if we can show that with the transportation component, that we've been able to secure essentially what I'm hoping to be over enrollment and, and perhaps receive some of the funding back? I know that's a very loaded question, and if you can't answer it, but it's just something I'm just curious to understand.
Yeah. Typically, Head Start, when they reduce your numbers, they allocate those funds to another grantee or another program. But there's, there are times when Head Start opens what they call initiatives that you can apply when they had a surplus of money. You can apply, and you can apply for additional slots. So if they open that, of course, I will, I will advocate to apply for additional slots.
Mr. Percival, I think I saw somebody else's hand. No? Mr. Percival?
Thank you, ma'am. Sure, you, you just made me think of another question. So currently with the, the last resolution that came down, it was a 101-seat reduction, and you were talking about doing budget analysis and revamping with the budget. Do, does Head Start know, does, does RPS Head Start, do we know yet if we are anticipating a further seat reduction with the budget reform, like a scope reduction, or do we think we'll stay at the 101-seat reduction with the budget?
We will stay with that reduction. Now they're going to monitor our enrollment for the next six months. So if we don't meet enrollment in the next six months, yes. And then they will put us again in an enrollment initiative, and we will restart the process, which I'm not looking forward to that. But at that, that's the process. They go on a monitor enrollment for the next six months, starting October 7.
Okay, just a, a follow-up. With, I assume this year, we don't have an issue with the, with the reduction because the dollar reduction will be next year. But the last time that this board went through a scope reduction, it had to do with budget constraints. So I, I, I'm assuming, so please correct me, that we'll be okay this year without any further seat reduction?
Yes. And the next year, we're going to have to really look into that budget because it's true. We will be tight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. If a partner applies or go through the process to serve as a community partner, how long is that process? Can you speak to how that, does that look? And if you're not really familiar, could the board get information on?
Yes. If a partner wants to be, become a partner for the Head Start program, there is a process. They have to be licensed. Then they have to have the, the permission from the fire department. They have to have everything completed that made them a full license daycare. So they can submit an application saying that they are interested in becoming partners. We do visits. We check the site. We see, we, we see if the site is appropriate for which ages, in which group, and where is their location, if it is in the need based on the community assessment. And then if everything works out, so and then we can submit that proposal to Head Start because, and then also to the board and Policy Council for approval, and then to the Office of Head Start if, if they approve that we partner with that, with that daycare.
How long does that process take to communicate with the interesting or potential partner?
It, it, it depends. It depends on how fast we do the visits, how fast we do the monitoring. If they have USDA, because that's a requirement. If they don't have USDA, they will never be able to partner with Head Start. So it depends where that, that daycare is at. If they have the USDA, the licensing and everything, the process will be faster.
Any other questions? Thank you. So I guess we need a motion at this point. Dr. Harris Muhammad?
I move to approve the Head Start Program reports, minutes, and financial statements presented by the administration.
Second. It's been moved by Dr. Harris Muhammad and seconded by Ms. Burke, Madam Clerk. Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Mr. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Yes.
Mr. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Good to see you up here. All right. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. If there's no concerns, can I get a motion?
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Harris Muhammad and seconded by Mr. Hedgepath, Madam Clerk. Mr.?
Yes.
My apologies, Mr. Percival, yes. Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi? Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke? Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving right along to 7.01, New Business. Ms. Rizzi, Dr. Harris Muhammad?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. There are two things. One is, I'd like, I, I think a couple of meetings ago, we were told that we'd get some updated data on exactly what schools had PTAs and which don't. we were told that we'd get some updated data on exactly what schools had PTAs and which don't. So I would like to just request that. Also, we talked about creating a communications committee. I would like to have that discussion brought up at a future meeting.
Thank you. The second one is actually on the October agenda. So I'll be reaching out to both you and Ms. Ricard for your thoughts with that. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. Can the school board receive an update and detailed outline of the Richmond High School for Arts Advisory Council? Who's on the council, what does the council do, the advisory council? How were they chosen? Is it possible for the school board to receive that information for a future meeting or email? You know, I would like for it to be on the agenda so the public can hear how the Richmond High School for the Arts Advisory Council was chosen. Also, I received a couple of calls and I just want to leave with apologizing because I am responding to a lot of information much later. And so this is one of the things that I received as a concern for several individuals in the community that the advisory council is not diverse. I don't know because I don't know who's on advisory council. And that it has been discussion, I don't know because I haven't attended. So I don't know what the discussion is. But it was shared with me that the discussion is turning into an application status where students, once the school is finished. And I assured them that this board has never discussed the Richmond High School for the Arts turning into a application status school or program. So that was, that's a concern that was given to me, sent to me. And just want to be able to address it with transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just reflecting as Dr. Harris Mohammed just stated about Richmond High School of the Arts. This came up a lot at the last game and you were not comparing the football field and you were not in comparison to what's expected at Richmond High School for the Arts. And it was a conversation, I'm not aware of this, so I would like to see an update regarding what type of field, whether it will be turf or whether it will be ground, dirt. So hopefully it will be turf because that was what was in the original plan. But I was asked on several occasions about that during that event this past Friday. And the second item was River City, I meant to mention this earlier, regarding the backup of traffic and a couple of the buses are overcrowded because of, and I have the notes and the parents that's calling just to share. And you may have already addressed it, I don't know, Mr. Superintendent. But there was concern about, and we do know South Side is bursting at the seams, so. And my last item is, I know we, this came up at the last, yesterday, for Armstrong, the, the process. And it's stated on a, to be addressed at an upcoming meeting, I believe. Can you give us an idea of when? Because, yeah, it needs to be stated publicly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for raising that. The Armstrong survey is going out to students and families this month. And that's why we delayed the final conversations, conversations surrounding that because there were several folks who understandably would like to get the information in the heartbeat of the school. And then from there, we will have it on the agenda. It's already on the agenda for October for us to have that renaming discussion. So thank you for raising that.
Follow up, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So the survey, can we see the survey beforehand or? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dr. Harris Mohammed and then Mr. Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Hedgepath. I mentioned this yesterday, but I don't want to get it, I don't want it to become lost in the sauce. If the school board can have information on the number of employees that's qualified for a local license and then what is our process awarding those local license? And I want, I would like for that, and I think it is value in discussing that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hedgepath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated yesterday and a number of other folks did too, I was pleased with the progress that we made with city council the other day. And so I would request that we, and maybe this belongs in the legislative committee to start, but I think that there needs to be a formal discussion and exploration of our legislative priorities beyond so much of the work that, that I know Mr. Stanley does and appreciative of, of that. But I would like to see advocacy leadership here on the dais as well. So if a discussion point can be made at some point about how we're advocating at the state level and what that message would be, and also how we're collaborating with our, our partners at city, city council.
Thank you for sharing that. We, I had a brief conversation with President Newbill at the end of our conversation, the collective that we had. And we discussed maybe thinking about a date. She brought up the same feedback in terms of being very strategic. And what I would really like to understand, we don't have to do this in this forum, but I do think that we should probably start putting pen to paper and sending emails back and forth about ideas because this is going to be a very collaborative effort. And we have to think about what our strategic priorities will be and align those with, and see where we, there are opportunities to collaborate without losing sight of what our main focus is as a school board. And so that's going to require some conversation. So I think we do need to flesh that out a little bit more, have some more conversations around that. So thank you. Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along with that, I do know that Mr. Stanley has been, you know, and I haven't checked it very recently, but he has been tracking legislative priorities, things that impact schools. He has on that website sample language that you can use to write legislators. So he actually does have a good amount of information for how our communities and how we can participate in, you know, the legislative process and lobby our legislators for some of our priorities or at least to address our priorities. So it's a pretty robust site that he's been keeping up.
Absolutely. And as I shared yesterday, I called him out by name that we will be leaning heavily on his expertise in this process because he does have a framework. I think the bigger goal for us as a school board is what our two, three, whatever strategic priorities will be and have that kind of tailor made in our efforts to advocate as well. So I think both could happen at the same time. Obviously, I'm one of nine and would love to hear everyone's ideas as well. But really excited about the start of the conversation and do believe that it's going to bring some great opportunities to fruition.
Anyone else?
If there's not, I just wanted to add. Can't read my handwriting here, so. Is that what it is? Thank you, I've never heard of that, but I'll take it. One of our student representatives shared concerns about basic supplies in the bathrooms. This is something that came up last year and I know there's been a transition. So I'll definitely, you know, give grace, but I think that that's something that we should probably revisit about ensuring that they are fully stocked. And I'm not saying that they're not, but just because she raised that, I think that's something that we should revisit. Another hot topic that we've all shared in previous meetings is one that the other student representative shared about preparation for career pathways after graduation. And I know that we've had some talks about it, but I think we should be very intentional about keeping that front of mind because that is a topic that continues to be raised. And I think as we continue to look at it, we can approach it to streamline the process and make it even better than what it already is. So I'd like to add that as well.
Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too wrote that down. And just as everybody walked through your build, you walk through your buildings often. On the first day of school as well, Dr. Newbill and I were together. I went to every bathroom out of habit, having been a principal for years. So you inspect what you expect. However, I'm sure principals have a checklist. I'm sure that's done. Why people not putting things in place of what's happening, I don't know. So that was disappointing to hear as well, especially this time of the year. And I'm going back to what you stated regarding, what the young lady stated about study period for seniors. That goes back to what Mr. Jefferson was talking about yesterday with the, what do you call the courses? No, not the four by four, the dual enrollment, thank you, dual enrollment. So I would like to have added to an agenda soon. An item regarding our early college academy. I'd like to see the numbers and what support has been put in place. We talked about giving those students support so we don't lose students as we did this past year. So I know some schools have study halls, just as the young lady from Richmond High School of the Arts just stated, for seniors or whatever else. And also, just in speaking with some of the students, because you have study hall, doesn't mean you're using time wisely. Okay, so that's, that's, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's, sometimes we need to teach our students what to do during that period. Otherwise, you're distracting others and not using the time well. They're still children. And I also want to compliment the wellness department, whomever put that in place regarding on the parent square today, regarding what's appropriate to wear at school. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parks. Thank you to your team. And that has been the talk of the town, not just Richmond, in terms of what our students, it was even on Ricky Smiley's show this week, okay? What are they wearing to school? Everybody. Thank you. I appreciate that reminder.
Thank you. I do have one last item and I know that this is a heavy lift and I'm not really sure how you all will address it, but I do want to say it. The young lady this evening mentioned that there were some barriers with, these opportunities are great, but there is a cost associated with them. And she talked about them having to fundraise. And I just want to understand, is there, is there a consistent structure around that? It's, I'm hearing sometimes like there's one of my schools, they needed like a volleyball uniforms. And so they were selling chocolate bars. And then there's another school where they're raising individual funds. I just want to make, understand what that looks like from school to school. And because we don't want that to be a barrier, if possible, if, if there's a way that we can support the efforts of our scholars and not have that as a deterrent. I just want to understand it a little bit better.
Alrighty. Moving right along, who has closed session?
I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene in closed session, wanting to discuss the performance and complaint of a client of a central office employee. The performance evaluation of two central office employees and the hiring of potential candidates for a central office position, as well as to consult with legal counsel regarding the same issues as authorized by Virginia Code two dot two dash three seven one one A one and A eight and two to consult with legal counsel concerning legal issues impacting school boards' resolutions as authorized by Virginia Code two dot two period dot two dash three seven one one A eight.
Second. Been moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Ms. Ricard, Madam Clerk. Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke. Mr. Jafari. Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now in close. We could transition to the conference room.